Good evening, everyone. It is now 6:00 P.M. At the November 28th Special Counsel Meeting. And let's bring this meeting to a close. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
Patty, would you please call?
Councilmember Frank Bankard.
The President.
Councilmember Leslie Notera.
Here.
Councilmember Lloyd Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Zabel.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jody Shirley.
Here.
Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
Interim City Manager Kyle Riefler.
Here.
And City Attorney Randy Mora.
The President.
Thank you, Patty. I have an announcement to make before passing right forward. Normally it would be at the end of the meeting, but I will probably forget and they will kill me. At the Holiday Social, they will now be having heavy appetizers and sweets for everyone to eat. So that means you don't have to go by McDonald's on the way over, all right? And now that we've got that out of the way, we have two items on our agenda tonight. For the sake of efficiency, I would like to address item two first, and then address item one. Would anyone like to make a motion to amend the agenda by swapping items to line two?
Motion.
Motion made by Frank Bankard. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, but might say, law in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The amended agenda is approved. All right, we're on to item one. This is approval of the city manager agreement. Before we begin, would the council, would any citizens like to address the council on this topic? Go. All right. Now to the council. So first, do I have a motion to approve, or approval of the city manager agreement?
Motion to approve the agreement as written and presented.
Motion made by Frank Bankard. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, did I give that one to Julie Shirley?
No.
Mr. Mora, because you authored this agreement, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, councilmembers. I know it's been some work for you to get to the point of reaching, hopefully, what will be the final approval of a manager to occupy this role. At our last meeting, we discussed some of the particulars of the draft agreement. And on last week, on Wednesday, as your correspondent summarizing the changes for benefit of all, the contract has been amended to account for a three-year term. The salary is $115,000 for the first two years, with third year subject to a potential salary increase commensurate with that for other employees, subject, of course, to your discretionary review. When I say that it is a three-year contract, I do so wish to underscore that all of the charter, at least the charter officials under contract, serve at will, at the pleasure of the council, and that can be terminated at any time, subject to the other contract terms that are in place in your charter. As for nature, one of the revisions Mr. Riefler had in his draft concerned the flexibility of schedule, not seeking to work anything less than an ordinary work week, but just in recognition of nights that can be late and otherwise, and flexibility and that not the same rigidity you would expect of an employee, it's a reflection of that as an executive position. The other is adding language requiring the manager to obtain insurance coverage based on the mayor's feedback. Another one was professional development. There was a lot of discussion. And I specifically, I contacted Lynn Tipton, the lead cities, who used to administer the credentialing process for managers to understand how the process worked. And depending on where you are in your career, what titles you have, what responsibilities there are, that can be anywhere from a two- to seven-year process. And that, and they'll have to take into account Mr. Riefler's resume and otherwise. So the way it's written is that the manager agrees to make a reasonable and good faith effort to work towards and to expect possible complete the ICMA's voluntary credentialing program through the Florida chapter's focus curriculum, because ICCMA is the International City and County Managers Association. Its Florida division does its own credentialing, or targeted towards Florida law, much in the same way with what we do for Florida policy, I should say. The process shall include submitting any requisite applications, collaborating with the senior advisory program, which we talked about, that they're not just there to help recruit, they're there as a sounding board, and they do have mentorship element. So pursuing mentorship opportunities and competing, completing online or in-person educational training. And the manager agrees to provide you a quarterly update to the city council on his efforts, progress, and obstacles to completing that voluntary credentialing program. Mr. Riefler was aware of this added language. It's also intended to not be so rigid as, so, you know, heaven forbid something happens like we have a hurricane here and like, "Well, you didn't take your classes this month." You know, there's some explaining, what are the obstacles, what are the issues, where am I, is, am I on track, and is this something we still wish to invest in and continue as time goes on? But at least accounting for that and adding the C V. The only real outstanding issue to place in this contract that, as you make your motions tonight, I would like for you to be clear about, is the effective date. I spoke with Heather Huagali, who's the person who does your finances, and based on past experience that I've found, it's best to make the effective date somewhere that aligns with the pay period, either the middle, beginning, end, however that works best. And speaking with her, depending on when you wish to make it active, basically Mondays are best, so if you wish to make it effective today, it would be in the middle of the pay period, and all those benefits would begin today, going, or it counts as having been this full business day and onward. If you wish to do it retroactively, that pay period began on the 21st, so you could make it retroactive, and then the full, that full period of the 21st to the 5th would be a full pay period at that rate. And if you wish to start at a future date, the 5th of December is your next pay period. But ultimately, I would say, starting on a Monday, up to which Monday, would be most desirable for efficiency on the administrative side of this agreement. So that's the only thing that I think needs, that I would request your additional input on, provided you don't have any further input on the amendments and discussions we've had. And Mr. Riefler and I have exchanged drafts. He was amenable to the terms as they're written in the draft certificate.
Thank you very much, council. I would be amenable to it starting today after all you've been in negotiation back and forth, if it's up to the city and Mr. Riefler to start it today. Julie Shirley?
I think start date today is fine, seeing as the meeting was today, everything else and the terms of the contract look appropriate, look like what we discussed and expected. So thank you very much for your input.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah, my first thought was to go retroactively. I think of middle of the pay period, although it's workable, doesn't make a lot of sense to me, where you have two different pay rates within a pay period. He's been doing the job wonderfully as the interim, so I think retroactively to the 21st would be my take on it.
Leslie Notera?
I would be interested in strategy.
Mr. Bankard?
I'd rather go retroactive June 1st, but I don't think that's going to fly, so I'll take it as May 1st.
All right, I don't have a problem with going retroactive, because it looks like it's going to be a long journey if I don't go that way. One of the questions I have for you, Mr. Riefler, is, do you have any problems with the preliminary objectives for city management? Do you see anything unreasonable, or it's looking like it could be impossible for you to complete?
I don't see anything unreasonable. I'd like to ask for a little more clarification on the dashboard and the scorecards for the city. But I think about each one of these I can do.
What pages was that?
So the, what, the top, it says Appendix A, and then immediately that is?
14.
And while you're flipping that, there's one other term I forgot to mention, as Mr. Riefler is currently an employee. With the new fiscal year, he gained three personal, it's three, right?
Three.
Three personal leave days that don't count against sick leave or annual leave. It's this other category where you have, so you can draw those down before you get to those. And this contract contemplates him keeping those as he transitions, and that was, has the benefit that he had already accrued at this point.
To use within a year.
Right, yeah, those ones carry over beyond the first year of contract. I'm not really sure.
I believe that number two would be, it would pretty much be up to you how to deliver the content, how to make us fully aware of how well you're doing. Obviously, we know where we are now, and you have a lengthy set of goals, which you'd like for you to achieve, plus the ongoing projects. The dashboard, scorecard, I know that we had a prior member who truly believed in metrics, and maybe to not to that point of being so brain, or still, we would like to have a scorecard, some way to keep, knowing where you are with your progress. Does that sound reasonable, councilman?
Yes, with an emphasis on the strategic side of it, so maybe we should keep that scorecard.
I have no more comments. Any other comments from the council? No? Yes?
I mentioned this to you, Mr. Mora. On page one, we talk about ZB A, and on page seven or 14, we talk about ZB B. You just typed appendix A and appendix B as a condition.
That will be, that will be tracked parallel in the final draft execution.
Okay, we have a motion on table, and now I believe it's time to take this to a vote. But before we do that, we need to, we need to make sure that we're all in agreement on the effective date. We have two, three right now. Can I reach your consensus on that?
Yeah, it's time for me.
Find your, okay, great. So you're, we would retroactively move you to.
Create a pay change to effective 21st.
All right. Any other questions, Mr. Mora?
None here, thank you, Mayor.
All right, in that case, Patty, I'd like to do this by roll call, please.
Councilmember Bankard.
Yes.
Councilmember Notera.
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Zabel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shirley.
Aye.
Mayor Gaddis.
Aye. So the motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mora, you are authorized to receive the agreement, and congratulations, city manager of the year.
I would thank you for the opportunity to, these past five months, to be the interim city manager and working with you guys. It's been a pleasure, and I look forward to many years working in the future.
And we appreciate you tolerating our adversities. All right, so we are now on to item number two. This is for consideration of selecting applicant to fill vacant city council seat. I have a few notes that I have to read, so bear with me. During this process, the audience must refrain from any outward display of approval or disapproval on any applicant. The seat being filled shall hold office until the next annual election in the city on March 12th, 2024. Now I am required to confirm the eligibility of each applicant. Whenever I call your name, you can just stand up at your seat, and I can answer these questions for me. Mark Chester. Are you a qualifying registered voter?
Yes, I am.
Are you a qualifying physical resident?
Yes, I am.
Are you a qualifying permanent resident?
Depends on what my wife says, but now, yes.
Are you qualified by civil rights?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Next up is Brad Greer. Mr. Greer?
Yes.
Are you a qualifying registered voter?
I am.
Are you a qualifying physical resident?
I am.
Are you a qualifying permanent resident?
I am.
Are you qualified by civil rights?
I am.
Thank you very much, Mr. Greer. Todd Harper. Are you a qualifying registered voter?
I am.
Are you a qualifying physical resident?
I am.
Are you a qualifying permanent resident?
I am.
Are you qualified by civil rights?
I am.
Thank you very much. And last, we have Belinda Livingston. Are you a qualifying registered voter?
Yes, I am.
Are you a qualifying physical resident?
Yes, I am.
Are you a qualifying permanent resident?
Yes, I am.
Are you qualified by civil rights?
Yes, I am.
Thank you very much. All right, now that we've got the formalities out of the way, I'm going to call on each one of you in alphabetical order. Each candidate shall be allowed a three-minute presentation of their qualifications and desire to serve. We'll start off with Mr. Chester. If I feel my, please step up to the podium. Whenever you finish your presentations, I'm going to ask you to stand, and then we'll invite the council to ask you questions.
I don't need that. My name is Mark Chester. I am a retired teacher and coach. During that time of 35 years of teaching and coaching, I've had many opportunities to have leadership positions in schools that I attended, and also in school districts that I worked in. And I've been retired now for six years. We moved here a little over three years ago, and I love this community, and I just have decided to put myself out there and help serve. I have never thought about getting involved in local politics at all until our, oh, about a year before our last election, and I started talking to my neighbors about how things were going, you know, what's going on here, because we love this place and it's so neat, and we heard some things that were pretty appalling and astonishing. And so I started doing some investigating, and I found that these kind of crazy things that I heard were actually true. So I did all I could as I got involved to help make sure we got back to some normal seat. So I threw that out there. And I will say this, too, doing this makes me have a whole new appreciation for people that do what you do, that put yourself out there to serve. This would be, I don't have any agenda except serving my community. I feel like I'm a good listener. I feel like, you know, I would be willing to work very hard. I am probably the least experienced person. I've never held any position on any city council or any type of board spot, but anybody who ever has served always had their first time. I remember when I got my first coaching position, I hadn't had one before. And if I hadn't been given the opportunity, I would never have had my life's calling, which was my life's calling, to be able to do it. So I just want to say, you know, I would like to put myself out there and serve this community if that's what you find you'd like for me to do. I think I could work in a very collegial manner and, you know, help keep this community wonderful, and, you know, help make sure things like how things got before never happen again. That's, that's where I am as far as that goes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chester. Council?
I have one question. Is there any if I drink one of these?
Yes.
Okay. Got a whole bunch, thanks.
Mr. Roberts?
What, what did you coach?
Well, I coached everything, but football is my passion. I'm very passionate about sports in general, football in particular. And now that I'm retired, I'm really passionate about Michigan football. So I am, I am floating right now. And I'm willing to work with people that are even from Ohio, so, yeah.
And so is that at high school level?
Middle school and high school level. Half my career I spent as a defense coordinator at different high schools. I spent a year and a half at University High School in Orlando, and we, when I was there, we won the only playoff game they ever won. And I even played quite a little part of that. I love football. I'd be much more comfortable talking about why you don't run cover zero all game and how to defend triple option than this, but, yeah.
So, and this doesn't have to be necessarily a football-related. While you were coaching those young men, what was some of, what was probably the biggest issue or challenge that ever, that ever came across with you?
When you're dealing with young people, you, the one thing you have to be sure of is that you always do the right thing. And you are a role model for these kids, so you have to make sure that you are constantly putting yourself out there and doing what you need to do. I've had many times where I had to deal with some really crazy parental issues, abusing their children, many things. 35 years in many states, Michigan, Texas, Minnesota, Florida, California, and then I wound up finally in Texas again, where I finished my career, but, yeah. Dealing with some, you know, interesting people, and you always have to make sure you're representative of the school. You have to always make sure you never do anything to bring dishonor on yourself, the team, and your school. And I was able to do that in 35 years in all the places where I taught and coached.
Thank you. Good questions.
Yes, Mr. President.
Yeah, when somebody, you know, goes forward with a public office, you know, I'll ask you, what do you want to do first? I mean, we always hear, "Oh, work hard," but you're seeing the city, you've got a kind of finger over the pulse. What were you going to start pursuing?
Well, I didn't, I didn't say I wanted to work hard. I want to work smart. I, there are things like, I want to just make sure that all the rules that we're supposed to be doing that make sense are being followed, and doing so in a way where we are not a nanny state, but where things are being done in a smart fashion. I also think because of our community being on the water, that we have issues that are unique to other places, like flooding, like building, you know, what are the rules? Is it okay to have a house going up for two years, you know, and being under construction for a very long time without seeing progress? And also, what we do as far as like flooding, when people are having construction done, are they following the rules as far as keeping the, you know, sewage open to where we don't have flooding? I mean, where we are, you're going to have some flooding issues, so what, what can we do to help make things like that better? I would say traffic issues are another, or anything we can do like that. I just love our community, and I would like to do my part to help make it, not make it, but keep it great. I think this is a wonderful community with a lot of really neat people in it. I haven't met anybody so far that I didn't like. They might not like me, but I like everybody that I've met so far. It's great.
Okay, a follow-up question would be, once you get elected, you should be out, obviously in the public eye. That means, you know, releasing your city email address to everybody, your phone number hidden out there. Do you have any problems with people calling you up or emailing you, just, you know, trying to know what's going on?
You can call me anytime you want. If I'm in bed asleep, my phone's off, so nobody will ever bother me when I sleep. But, no, I don't, I put myself out there during that last election, and probably a lot of people found out who I am through that. And I was able to debate without ever getting ugly or personal with anyone, which isn't always easy to do.
Now, that's my question. Anyone else? Right, Leslie, did you have a question?
You said you're a Wolverine.
Yes, ma'am, but I don't hate anybody, not even a Buckeye fan. I promise.
How about a Spartan?
We're brothers. We're brothers. And, you know, I have an older sister. It's not always easy. I love my sister, but it isn't always easy to like her. You know what I'm saying? So, yeah.
Just had to throw that out. You said Wolverine.
And you're, or I have one. Okay, I only have one. Suppose that this is not an appointment situation in your actual campaign. What would be the number one issue that you would live on, any of your worries, or the very top issue, and nothing else?
Well, the first thing is.
Only, only one?
Right, right, one thing. I'm here to represent them. You're not there for you, you're there for us. So that's what I would say. Sometimes you don't want, what you, what you would rather do is what everyone else would like. And when we're a representative of people, then we need to represent the will of the people.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chester. That's it.
Thank you. Oh, I got this wrong.
All right, next up, we have Mr. Greer. Greer, you have great minutes to introduce yourself, and we will put you through the same ruling process.
I brought my own water. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council staff, fellow residents. My name is Brad Greer, and I stand before you asking to be considered for the councilman replacement. My background is business. I have been an insurance executive for several decades, and have spent my adult career in an industry, building companies, the careers of others, and serving to promote risk management through work with state and national associations. Prior to settling my business interest in 2019, I was the CFO of an agency, an insurance agency in St. Louis, had about $150 million in sales and about 100 employees. In that role, I learned the importance of team building and financial stewardship, how to count on other team members, deal with them with respect and stability. As president of a private company, I learned the responsibility and hopefully the grace to, that's required to serve those with whom I work and those to whom I'm accountable. Like the previous speaker, my interest in this chamber came about a year and a half ago, and my wife and I started attending meetings. We love this community. I haven't had a beer since I've been in here before. I picked this up, Salen. And it seems like we turned a corner. We love this community, and I look forward to promoting a sense of civic pride, both as a citizen and hopefully on this council. While I don't have any executive duties anymore, I continue to manage some client relationships and serve as a director on three industry boards, two of them nationally. I also serve on the Big Eye Flood Insurance Task Force, which is a committee of insurance executives who deal with FEMA and Congress on legislative and coverage issues. I know flood insurance is important to me, I think it is to the rest of us in this room as well. In the role as a director, I have learned that what's required to provide guidance and leadership to those who actually administer the day-to-day affairs and do the work of a city or any large organization. For many years, I served as Planning and Zoning Commissioner in the city of Collinsville, Illinois. For three years, I served as chairman of that commission. In the course of that time, I was a member of many public meetings, held several public hearings, and in that role, I learned that there's a very real importance to a comprehensive plan, to governing documents, and to being faithful to what the vision is of the city. I've also learned that sometimes being understanding and open-minded is the best way to meet the needs and
the needs and promote the well-being of our citizens. As president and chairman of Habitat for Humanity for two counties in Illinois, I learned how to lead a divergent group of opinions and interest together for a common and noble good. And in that role, I learned that there's a sacred trust when you're dealing with public funds and that there is a need to have open and unimpeachable integrity. My family's been visiting this area for over thirty-five years and in that time, we've fallen in love with the community, we've fallen in love with the beach, I've fallen in love with sailing. And we moved to Bel Air Beach in 2017. We did live in Clearwater for a few years prior to that until I found the sanctum that I call Bel Air Beach. We're both raised in small towns, we have a keen sense of civic duty, and if appointed, I will work tirelessly with you and alongside you to preserve and continue the amazing spirit of this community.
Thank you, Mr. Greer. Counsel?
Yes.
Yes, my too.
Notice on your application you put down that you have a condo that's your home state, so you're a permanent resident of that address, but you also lease another property in Bel Air Beach and close friends. If you know, you kind of follow this along, is short-term rentals is a real problem, a second point for this community. Would that force all you from being able to deal with legislation on short-term rentals? Would that cover your decision at all?
That's a, that's a great question. No, no, it would not. I do live in a condo, I live in a three, my wife and I live alone in a three-bedroom, three-bathroom condo. In the time that I have been a permanent resident of Bel Air Beach, I've owned homes in Tampa Bay, a short-term rental in Indian Rocks Beach, homes in Bel Air Beach and Clearwater. Real estate has been pretty good to me. I share the concerns of short-term rentals and no, there was no conflict for me whatsoever.
So it's not a short-term rental?
No, 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 it's, it's, it's a, it's a long-term lease.
Right, the second question...
I do believe, I do believe we have a ninety-day requirement here, so...
I want to make sure. Okay, the second question was, you said you work with a flood insurance task force. Then again, I have problems sometimes with ethics, it may be in conflict. Is this a for-profit agency that you are working for, the flood insurance task force?
No, that's a great question. So, the Independent Insurance Agents and Brokers of America is the largest trade group for independent agents in the country. And they have a task force and we have a number of lobbyists and so I am a member of that task force and we interact. I just got an email today asking for an interview with FEMA so they could cure my concerns about the program. So it's a non-paid position, it's a trade organization.
Are you a registered lobbyist for that?
I am not, I'm not a registered lobbyist.
But you do perform lobbying for that?
No, sir, we, we have paid lobbyists to do that.
Okay, because again, that's kind of a caution mark for me. If we start dealing, which we were, in a flooding area, we might have to address flooding-type items. And unfortunately in California, we really, sorry, Florida, we really can't recuse yourself from the vote, you just can't say, you know, maybe involved in this, I can't recuse from the vote. I just want to make sure that you're really separate from that organization when you're up here to the point where you may not be participating with it anymore.
I am, well, first of all, I'm a, I'm a director with the, with that organization. So the flood task force is a committee of independent agents from across the country. And so, you have to know, I, if you, I would, I would certainly broach that with our legal counsel and ask them what they thought was a conflict of interest. I represent independent insurance agents, so I don't see that that's a...
You're representing the agents and the companies, not...
Not the companies, the agents.
The agents, but not the people that purchase the policies?
Well, that's, that's the whole role of an independent agent, is to represent the people that purchase the policies, but with flood insurance is federally backed insurance. So then having anything to do with claims interpretation, policy...
I appreciate your check, we're legal, we're kind of foremost, I just wanted to check with our...
At this stage, I think it's appropriate for me to interview in the dialogue and discourse on the matter. A legal conflict under Chapter 112 of the Florida Ethics Code concerns the community gain and loss and individual experiences based on policy decisions, money up, money down. What he described is an unpaid, largely an unpaid position, and even if it were paid, the tests applied to that, mainly the size of the class test, would make whatever interest held almost certainly insignificant, below the one percent threshold required. He's not talking about lobbying this specific, any government, any government advocacy is at the federal level, nothing specific to this community. He's not lobbying for the community in which he's part, nor is he a lobbyist at all, as he's described it. There's nothing in the ethics code that prevents you from having strong policy decisions on an issue and ascending to public service, whether he has informed or strong convicted policies or positions on the best route forward for insurance, parks, bike paths, whatever it is that brings people to public service. And let me begin by thanking all of the candidates and people interested, because the process doesn't work without people willing to step up based on their passions or at least open the surface. I'm not hearing a Chapter 112 issue that would prevent him from being part of the council as, inasmuch as it seems to be the thrust of the discussion at this point.
Clear it up, thank you very much. May I add, may I add to that, that I generate no revenue from the sale of flood insurance and any revenue that's generated by any firms that I'm associated with sell no, I own license in the state of Florida, but I sell no insurance in Florida. So I would, I would generate no revenue whatsoever from flood insurance.
I have no more questions. That's very true. Mr. Rorodzis.
Mr. Greer, I don't think under 112, if there wasn't conflict, you just, you are allowed to recuse yourself still, right?
If there is in fact, yes, you are able to recuse and have not heard anything that would be defined as a frequently occurring conflict such as you could not dispatch a stimulus.
No, and I appreciate, are you working with Rick Scatell, because he seems to be the only person through a spearhead of this horrible flood insurance that, from FEMA, I don't know how many people are gonna get dropped at my private, this had just happened in the last couple of months.
It is, there are a number of issues with flood insurance. The new maps are a problem. We had a congressman who was from my former state, who wanted to privatize, and I had several meetings with him, pointing out that while there is probably capital, at least at that point in time in the market, to privatize it, if that was a long-term solution, people in his district would be able to buy earthquake insurance, which they cannot. So it is, it needs to be a federal backstop. The biggest thing we need to do is have a long-term solution. This stuff kicking began on the road for six months, twelve months, is...
Without exposing your address, it looks like you look out your back window or front window, whatever you call it, do you see a call in Mexico?
I'm about thirty feet from it, yeah.
What is your position on beach re-nourishment? That's what I'm gonna be getting, it seems. And where would you put your resources if you had a chance of Penny's Pinellas? Would you put it into underground lighting or would you put it in the beach re-nourishment?
Well, you know, the beach is, is a big attraction and so here would be an illustration of what's my personal view and what's, and what's the community view. This less hurricane, re-tapping with the beach, I mean, it's happened what it was six months ago. And, you know, I am very concerned about beach re-nourishment and I'm concerned about our neighbors to the south and what effect that's going to have on our ability to, next time the re-nourishment rolls around, but I do believe that our public beaches are a large draw for, for our community, so I think that's, I think that's a big deal.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I can just a follow-up to that. Bel Air Beach is a private beach. I wouldn't say private, but we have limited access. So when you're speaking of public, it's a public draw, we're not a tourist community. Explain yourself, when you say that.
Well, we do have, we do have access for our residents, the residents of Bel Air Beach. We have Morgan Park, we have a number of entrances and there, anybody that's, has signed for re-nourishment is given an easement to allow access. So yes, I do recognize and get frustrated sometimes when, when I've got a lot of crowds outside, outside my back patio, but no, it's more than just those that, of us that are fortunate enough to live on the beach. Everybody who lives in Bel Air Beach has access to the beach. Or at least has my...
President, yes, good, all right. All right, thank you.
And I would add that the public draw may vary, so that's, I would say that's a fair statement. I do have a, I keep bringing it up, the beach re-nourishment. Do you feel like the county has been doing enough to try and tie for our beaches, draw Gulf Coast?
So I, anything, any evidence that I have, Mr. Mayor, is any, no, but I would say no, because what they've done doesn't seem to have been effective.
Okay, that's fair. I hope I have any other questions? Anyone else? All right, thank you very much, Mr. Greer. Next up, Mr. Harper.
Good evening, council, members of, members and citizens of Bel Air Beach. My name is Todd Harper and I am applying for the position of council, the position that was introduced by Mr. Gunn. Bel Air Beach is a really unique community and it's unique in several ways. Number one, being that it has no commercial interest. And that raises issues and concerns for the council and for the city, because effectively the city has to be self-funding. So in going through what the council does and what the council has to look at, not only do we have the unique aspect of having to be self-funded, but we also have to be a community that is aware of flood and is aware of beach and is aware of all the unique issues of a Gulf Coast community. The members sitting on this council do not have an easy job. It is a job that really requires teamwork, it requires advocacy, and requires communication. I have been an engineer and a technologist for over thirty years. I tend to be more of a problem solver. I look at a problem, I break it down, and I try to analyze how to come to a resolution on a problem. I see an opportunity for the council to take really good advantage of its boards and its committees, not only to take the burden off of council, but to get a diversity of opinions and a diversity of ideas. I have sat on committees, I have sat on council, I understand the challenges that it puts you through, I understand the time commitments that it takes. So my advocacy is for the council and what it represents as a community, but it also represents setting priorities, setting a strategic plan. So when you ask about where, as a council, I would see opportunity, I see it in communications of the citizens. I see it in using and taking access to city resources such as the easements and the parks. I see it as advocacy and opportunity for undergrounding. I see as advocacy, advocacy and understanding for beach re-nourishment. So I see a lot of opportunities, I see a lot of work, but I think that I step up to play with experience from council, experience from being behind that desk, and at the same time, the opportunity to be an advocate and to be a proponent for the citizens. And I look at that.
Counsel? Mr. Rorodzis? So eighteen and nineteen were on the council?
Yes.
So at that time, so was that a two-year term then, or a three-year term?
That was actually an interim term, again.
Okay.
So I stepped, I stepped in after another council member left and stood into that position until the next election.
Was there anything in particular, when that, when that term ended, that helped you decide not to run again?
I actually did run again. Mr. Gunn and I were on the same ticket, in fact. So no, I did run and, you know, the citizens spoke for what they wanted at that point in time and that's what it is. But I'm stepping up with the opportunity to serve again and be here for the community. I have since retired, I grew up in the area, I actually went to Seminole High School, I actually went to USF, and I've been in this community, in this area for, you know, forty-five years. I've been a citizen and resident of Bel Air Beach full-time since 2015. So I've been through the citizen side, the council side, the committee side, and I think I offer all the opportunity and experience directed at council.
Perfect. So on that eighteen and nineteen term, just thinking back, so what was like one of, what was the top issue that probably came across while you were on that council?
Three big issues that happened in that council session was undergrounding of the Twenty-second Street in Bellevue, Illinois State, beach re-nourishment, and city easements.
What, what regards to the city easements?
There was a lot of discussion about encroachment on those easements and the idea that there was overgrowth and there wasn't really citizen access through all the easements. So there was a large effort put into place to survey those easements and to make sure that there were cornerstone markers to basically indicate where city property was and then from there to decide how to mend those easements moving forward. Thank you.
Yes, you're a member of the code review. What would be your number one thought regarding the code? I mean, what would you think would be their priority if you were reviewing the code right now?
I think the biggest issue on, on code right now was really prioritizing the individual citizens. There's a lot of talk and discussion when we originally did the code review, which was dealing with hedges and sizes and outbuildings and all, a lot of the things that individual residents had a concern. The original code review had, as an example, you could have an outsized building, four feet high and ten feet long and two feet wide, so not a usable scenario. So the code review can be really focused on the idea of making the code usable, but making it more realistic and practical at the same time. So when I look at code review at the present time, it really comes down to enforcement. I think we've got a good set of code, but I think the idea of interpreting and the idea of utilizing that code to its fullest extent is really where the city manager, Kyle, is gonna have his hands hold.
Counsel? I'll ask you the same question as everyone asked, Mr. Chester. You're running again, what's the number one issue on your ticket?
My number one issue is communication. So when I look at the citizens and I look at how the city communicates with the citizens, it's, there is an opportunity for automation, there's an opportunity for improvement. I think some of the communication Mr. Zabel has been doing has been spectacular as far as just opening the door and having that level of communication. I think there's a great opportunity, as I said earlier, for the committees and the boards to really offload some of what council does and make some really wide perspective recommendations to the council of how to move things forward and how to move things in place. I think the other thing I find really intriguing is going to be the Bel Air Beach Foundation. I think that the council could do an awful lot with that foundation and have that support a lot of the backend projects that could be privately funded with the city's support. So that's what I, one of the things I would look forward to seeing is how does this foundation play and how can it work with to make it a meaningful part of what we do from a communication and engagement and the citizens' perspective.
And I'll ask you one more. How would you spend the community foundations?
I think the community foundation should be partially involved or integrated with the citizens and vice versa. I think the idea that you could, as an example, I would love to see, I talk about the easements a lot, but I would love to see maybe, maybe a citizen sponsorship of individual segments of easement for the maintenance, something offloading of that expense, that cost. The pick up the trash on the beach days, things like that. I think there's a lot of different ways to incent and communicate and entice, you know, the citizens to get involved. The challenge that the council has is, you know, with as many people as we have that are not homesteaders, not permanent residents, communication becomes difficult and I think that you get into privacy issues, so I think the whole way the city interacts with, with the citizens... the whole way the city interacts with, with the citizens is, is a challenge at best. And I think that's something that I, I think the committees and I think some others will have to help with.
I have no other questions. Council?
Thanks very much, Mr. Harper.
Thank you.
All right, last up, we have Belinda Livingstone.
Thank you for having me here. My name is Belinda Livingstone. I'm a registered nurse by trade. I do have my master's in nursing with a side note on leadership and management. My background is, you know, I was only at the staff level for six months in my nursing career. I immediately understood at that point that from a leadership perspective is where I needed to be in order to have the most effect on the members that served our patients at the time. So I've gone straight into leadership in my nursing career. So going from director of case management, director of quality and risk management, director of operations. I was CEO of a hospital at one point in time and currently I'm an operations manager with oversight for care teams in the first state. My passion is looking at regulatory guidelines, which is a little strange. I love regulations. And in the hospital environment, there's not just one overarching regulatory body. There are several. So you have your federal regulations. You have your regulatory body regulations. You have your state regulations. It's, it's a harmony in all the regulations and bringing it all together. That being said, I've served on various policy and procedure committees in my career. Currently, I'm a lawyer as well. You know, it's, it's taking a look in, in how can we best serve, what are the best practices? What are life organizations doing to best serve their members? I want to be able to do that for the city of Miller Beach. I have served on boards in the past. In San Antonio, I served on the ALMO chapter of the Case Management Society for several years as a recording secretary. Most recently, I've been nominated as president-elect for the ALMO chapter, Case Management Society of America. I have a strong passion for doing what's right for those that serve.
Thank you very much. Council?
Sure.
Let's start with Mr. Roberts.
So you've been on the citizens advisory committee, which is wonderful. So what's, what's one of the bigger things you guys on that committee have to tackle since you've been involved?
So with all due respect, I've only been to one meeting and that was this last meeting and we were talking about, I'm going to go forward probably in January. So nothing too meaty at this point in time.
Well, thank you for volunteering.
You're welcome.
And your husband's name is Graham, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so when I was campaigning, he's at the time, and told me that he didn't like me, so he worked very well, but I had to take some points off.
Okay.
Just getting one away, just kidding. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Zabel?
Yeah, I mean, I'd say you sort of, I could be a little bit different here. I found out too, is you have these two meetings a month. You try to limit them to relatively sane hours, but that also means the time involved for prep work. Trying to understand the issues dropped by. Just want to make sure that you understand that you don't have anything that would interfere with making this your priority, would you?
No, I do not. As a matter of fact, I work from home, so I am remote. So I'm very flexible as far as my work schedule is concerned. It's Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, but I do have the flexibility to, to move around the hours. As far as doing the lead work and the research, that's definitely something that's a passion of mine and I completely understand that I've been willing to take that, but I don't have any conflicts.
Okay, that brings up the big one. I mean, we've been kind of, everybody's been talking about you, if you're running or what, what's your number one idea? What do you want to accomplish? Okay, we see you've done here.
You know, a lot can change in a year. So definitely lead by example, do what's best, show up for the community, be at community events. But, you know, a lot can change in a year as far as what the needs are for the community and what can be solved in that year.
What do you see right now? I mean, name one item that you want to look at.
As far as the needs concerned?
The city, yeah.
As far as the city, you know, they talk about, you know, the traffic issues. Yeah, that's a huge issue, but, you know, how, how can that be resolved? I would not know without looking at the regulations and without being familiar with them as far as that's concerned. There was an accident in front of, you know, we were crossing Gulf Boulevard. We hit the button to go across and there was a big accident and we had to call 911 and my amazing husband, you know, helped care for that man until, you know, EMS arrived and I was trying to deal with traffic. And, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a big problem. I just think that, you know, we get more involved. Traffic is an issue, but how do you resolve that? I don't know.
Council? Okay, a topic was brought up earlier about the easements. There's a lot of controversy right now. So I'm going to ask you, put yourself out there. What would you do with, with the easements that are running between the properties?
With the easements? Not everybody's affected by the easements. You know, walking around and doing the drop-offs, I'd just very clear to see. I think with having the easements taken care of and being paid and whatnot, I think there's a lot of upheaval with that. I also think that there's a lot of resource that will have to go to providing extra security around that, you know, as far as the police force are concerned, et cetera. So I don't, I don't necessarily agree with, with that per se, but it depends on what everybody, you know, what the community wants. But I don't believe that everybody's affected by those because it's not in on every street corner.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other questions? No? Thank you very much.
I appreciate it.
Okay, now it's time for citizen comments. Please remember that you are addressing the council, not the candidates, that you will be limited to three minutes. Would any citizens like to speak on this topic? I want everyone to speak at once. Okay, so now we're back to the council. The council will vote to determine who the council would like to appoint. To be appointed, an applicant must receive no less than four votes from the council. If no applicant receives four votes, we will take the top two applicants and vote again. In the event of a tie, of less than a majority, the council and applicants may use an alternate method to decide the winner. A good example is flipping a coin. I'm hoping that this council won't do that too. Before we decide, I'd like to thank each of you who applied for this position. The volunteering shows that you truly care about your city and I encourage each of you to seek other ways to serve if you are not already. Any other discussion from the council before we go?
I guess this one's.
Go ahead, Mr. May.
I guess this one's for Mr. Moore. Since ethics training and refreshing ethics training is per calendar year, we, any candidate elected tonight have to go through that since we're down the line the last four, five weeks.
Offhand, I don't, I don't believe so, but I'd have to look at that. If they did, there's a devilishly handsome, really an attorney offering some online in about two weeks. It's me. But I don't, I don't believe that to be the case, but if it is required, there are channels to do so with a relatively painless approach, given that it's still ethics training. Thank you.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank all four candidates. When this opportunity availed itself, I was curious, to be honest with you, to who and how many would actually, you know, want to, want to jump in here and do this. And I find myself now in a scenario where we have four very, very good candidates. I'm actually, I've got seven down myself. Yeah, I, I don't think there's, there's not a loser here. So obviously we have to select one person. And this is very similar to, months ago, we had to select between two legal firms. And I felt at that time that either one we chose was going to do a wonderful job for our city. As I feel for you candidates, will do a wonderful job for our city. So thanks again for stepping up.
Any other comments? All right, we have ballots already in our possession. I'm going to ask for you to vote for one.
Notaro voted for Mr. Chester. Councilmember Roberts voted for Ms. Livingstone. Councilmember Zabel voted for Mr. Harper. Vice Mayor Shirley voted for Mr. Chester. Mayor Gaddis voted for Ms. Livingstone.
All right, so we did not reach a majority of four for any candidate, but the top two are Mr. Chester and Ms. Livingstone. So you should have a second ballot. And what I ask the council to do is scratch off Mr. Brier and Mr. Harper and vote for Mr. Chester or Ms. Livingstone.
Councilmember Roberts voted for Ms. Livingstone. Councilmember Zabel voted for Ms. Livingstone. Vice Mayor Shirley voted for Mr. Chester. And Mayor Gaddis voted for Ms. Livingstone.
So we have a four to two vote of the chair of Ms. Livingstone. So now I need a motion to appoint Ms. Livingstone as councilmember of the city of Miller Beach. Do I have a motion? Motion made by Frank Bankard. Do I have a second? Second by Lloyd Roberts. Patty, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bankard?
It's just a yes or a no vote.
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Notaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Zabel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Gaddis?
Aye. So the motion passes unanimously. Patty, would you please do the honors? And I'm going to ask Ms. Livingstone to come forward to be sworn in.
Just raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support, honor, protect and defend.
That I will support, protect and defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
And of the state of Florida.
And of the state of Florida.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
Under the Constitution of the state.
Under the Constitution of the state.
And under the charter of the city of Miller Beach.
And under the charter of the city of Miller Beach.
And that I will well and faithfully perform.
And that I will well and faithfully perform.
The duties of councilmember.
The duties of councilmember.
On which I am now about to enter. So help me God.
Congratulations, Ms. Livingstone.
Can I have you sign your oath?
I'd like to thank everyone who attended tonight. That being said, council, I have a motion to adjourn. Motion by Frank Bankard. Second. Second by Mike Zabel. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, good night, everyone.
Mayor, I would also like to administer the oath to the new city manager.
Yes.
We certainly need to do that.
Okay.
Well, has he signed the contract yet?
Pardon me?
Has he signed the contract yet?
He can. It's in his inbox to be printed, so if that's a concern.
What's that?
He can. It's in his inbox to be printed, if that's a concern. I revised it when we were sitting here.
Okay.
So you can administer the oath. You may wish to reconvene so that you're at business if you wish to do this adjournment.
We can do that. How are we going to do this? All right, the second council, special council we do now, or the continuing council we do. We're back in session. And Patty, if you don't mind, would you please do the honors?
Randy, take the picture.
Can we find any council member up there? There, yeah. Wait, it's a facial.
As a sworn, duly sworn member, you can.
I can.
Yeah. I do solemnly swear.
That I will support, honor, protect and defend.
That I will support, honor, protect and defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
And of the state of Florida.
And of the state of Florida.
That I am duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution of the state.
And duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution of the state.
And under the charter of the city of Miller Beach.
And under the charter of the city of Miller Beach.
And that I will well and faithfully perform the duties.
And that I will well and faithfully perform the duties.
As city manager on which I am now about to enter.
As city manager on which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
Okay, let me ask that again. Do I have a motion to continue? Motion. Hard to adjourn. Second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, good night, everyone.